Good evening and welcome. This is a public hearing of the Zoning Board of Appeals of the City of Evanston. The zoning ordinance directs this body to hear applications for major variations, special uses, and appeals from decisions of the zoning administrator. Depending on the type of matter, this board will make either a final determination or send its recommendation to city council. Please call the roll.
Board member Mirchif?
Here.
Board member Erdola?
Here.
Board member Cullen?
Present.
Chair Burns?
Here.
Board member Colley?
Present.
And board member Deacon?
Here.
And board member Gingold?
All right, with six members present, we do have a quorum tonight. Also present tonight are Planning and Zoning Administrator Scott Mangum and Assistant City Attorney Mario Tretto? Which way? Tretto. Mario Tretto. I'll try and remember that now. This is a formal meeting and there are rules to cover in our proceedings. Most importantly, only one person speaks at a time, so all testimony may be accurately recorded. Anyone who wishes to address the board regarding any matter on the agenda will have the opportunity to do so at the appropriate time. Our procedure is to hear from staff on the documents on file and then receive testimony and other evidence from the applicant or appellant. Next, persons who wish to make a statement regarding the matter may do so at that time. Any person with a legal interest in property located within 500 feet of the subject property may present evidence, reasonably question witnesses, or seek a continuance of the hearing. When all supporting and opposing testimony and statements have been heard, the applicant or appellant will be given the opportunity for rebuttal or a closing statement. Then, the board will close the record and begin deliberations. Although all testimony will be under oath and although we do not apply the strict rules of evidence, please limit your testimony or statement to your personal knowledge. When you address the board, please state your name and address and sign in on the provided sheet. Our meetings are audio and video recorded. Please make sure that you are at a microphone when asking questions or making statements so that you can be properly recorded. All proceedings are subject to broadcast at a later date. Any matter not concluded at tonight's hearing will be continued to our next regularly scheduled meeting. There are two items on the agenda today. And the first item is the approval of the meeting minutes. Has everyone had a chance to read those meeting minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
Any changes? Fantastic. Do you have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of June 20, 2017.
Second.
So we moved in second. If all does in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I will note that those not voting were not present at that meeting. All right, so now we are moving on to old business, which is 1018 Michigan Avenue, which is ZBA 17ZMJV-0038. At the last meeting, there was a vote that was taken, and it was a vote of three to two, and which we do not have four concurrent votes. So the final two members of the board who were not there are going to vote tonight. So have those people who weren't at that last meeting, have you had a chance to adequately review the record?
Yes.
And I have as well. So I will let you vote first.
Can you read the motion, just so I'm clear on how the motion was phrased? And I believe it was in the affirmative to pass the revised three-car garage, correct?
Yes, I do not have the exact wording of the motion, but I do know that it was in the affirmative.
I can tell you that the motion was to approve the scaled-down version of the garage for the applicant. Was, city had approved variants to 31, I think 31.5%? Scott, do you have that?
I can unpitch five of the minutes.
No, that's okay. I saw the video. I reviewed the meeting minutes. I just wanted to make sure I was clear on how it was phrased, and it was phrased in terms of moving to pass the revised three-car garage.
Yes.
Correct. I would vote against. I'm not voting for that motion. I don't believe that standards were met in order to pass that motion.
Okay, thank you. My thoughts on the matter were succinctly said by Scott Gingold. He and I rarely agree on anything, for those of you following this reality show. And yet, he said everything I would have said. And so I vote no for that motion as well. So we now have a vote of three to four against, and so that motion does not pass. So with that, we are moving on to the next order of business, which is 1125 Madison Street. And we will first have Scott read that into the record. Please.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. The item here is 1125 Madison Street. It's an appeal. Robert and Betty Lambert, property owners, appeal the zoning administrator's determination that the gravel area in the east side yard is a patio, per zoning code section 6-18-3 definitions. The zoning administrator's determination requires the removal of the gravel/patio as patios are not permitted in side yards, per zoning code section 6463, Table 4A-10, and was a previous variation request to allow a patio within the east side yard, and that request was denied. The Zoning Board of Appeals is determining body for this case. Thank you.
Before we have the applicant read, sorry, come up and tell us about their case, I just wanted to clarify, because I had some trouble following what the case was actually about. This is not about what the material is that's on the ground. It is about whether this is a patio and whether a patio is allowed in a side yard, which it's not.
Further clarify, right?
Sure.
So previously, there was a request at this property. There was actually installation of a patio in both the side yard and rear yard. Following that installation, there was a building permit request for those two patios. Building permit request could not be approved because the overall impervious surface would have been at 48%, where 45% is allowed, and a patio was proposed in the side yard where patios are not allowed in the side yard. Following this determination, a minor variation was requested by the applicant. The determination on that was to partially approve and partially deny the minor variation. That partial approval allowed the rear patio to remain and did not allow for the patio in the side yard to remain. Based on the rear patio staying and the side patio being removed, also was a variation to allow 46% impervious where 45% is allowed. Following that determination, the applicant was given until, based on the weather and the date of being late November, was given until May 1st to correct that. In the interim, the applicant had corresponded with zoning staff and did receive communication that gravel would not be considered to be an impervious material and would not be considered to be a gravel area. That was information that was given out by zoning staff. On May 1st, there was an inspection, found that there's still this rectangular area, roughly 10-foot-by-15-foot area that had previously been covered as a slate patio, now remained with gravel. Photos were taken of this, and the zoning administrator, myself, made a determination that based on the definition of a patio, having the hardscape material within the side yard and the dimensions of that hardscape material being that same 10-by-15-foot area that was previously requested a slate patio, that this improvement constitutes a patio. So that is the determination, and essentially is what's at issue this evening.
All right. So now we will, anybody who's interested in speaking tonight, can I have you raise your right hand? And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth throughout the course of these proceedings? Fantastic. So whoever wants to present, if you can come up and give us your name and address. And then, anybody else who wants to talk at the end, if you can come up and give us your name and address as well too, please. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Donna Lee Floater. I live at 826 Gray Evanston. I'm an architect and a longtime friend of the Lamberts. I helped them with their addition 17 years ago. When this issue came up, Betty sought my advice, and I helped her with her zoning submittals for this variance project. I'm not sure what we can add to what Mr. Mangum succinctly stated, other than we do not define that gravel area as a patio. It is permeable. I know Mary Beth you said that material didn't matter, but I see it the same as wood mulch, grass, gravel. It is permeable space, so it doesn't violate the limit of impermeable surfaces on the lot, which we know has already been exceeded. So, other than that, when the original bluestone patio was placed and was cited as not being allowed and the variance wasn't granted, we were told, both Betty and I were told separately by separate members of zoning staff, that gravel was a fine alternative to what was there and would be permitted. So they went to the expense of putting that down. And then, when the final inspection happened, suddenly the rules had changed, and it's no longer considered permitted, and we weren't sure why that is. So that's why we asked for a variance, because we see this as a permeable gravel area. Their intent is to use it. There's a hose bid nearby. They can use it to wash the dogs. There's a path through it, so it's not got chairs or tables in it. So it's not being used and wouldn't be used as a patio space.
Can I ask you a question about?
Sure.
So originally, when it had slate, as I read through the documents, originally when it had slate, it had a concrete slab underneath of it?
I was not part of the project at that time. I don't believe there was a concrete slab. I think it was set on other gravel.
Okay. I need you to come up, give me your name and address, and we gotta be able to hear you.
I'm Betty Lambert, and thank you for hearing us tonight. My husband would have been with us, but he's out ill. And it's all set in gravel, and that's how him and my son was able to take it up. There was never any concrete involved.
Okay.
And Officer in his report also verified this information. It was all false claims.
Okay.
We would have never been able to pick up the gravel and move it, the stones, the path stones.
They picked up the bluestones themselves and moved it.
Okay. So also, when we call it slate, it wasn't really slate, it was bluestone?
It was bluestone pavers, yes.
So originally, it was bluestone pavers?
Yes.
Okay. So can you address, again, try not to talk about what the material is? When it's 10-by-15, it becomes, it has the feel of a patio. It's not an amorphous shape. It's not a path going through places. Those sorts of things are allowed to have gravel, right? So it's not the imperviousness that's the issue. It's the shape and the location, because a patio is not allowed to be in your side yard.
Correct. So if, I'm asking you a question.
Yeah.
If it were not a rectangular shape, it would be allowed to stay?
My guess is that if it were smaller, such that you couldn't put a table there.
We submitted some photographs to Melissa, and it shows.
Are they in our record?
They should be. They were submitted to Melissa and Michael prior to this meeting, and we were told they would be part of the packet.
Let's flip to them.
There.
So when did, so?
So that shows a stone path right through it. That is the gravel area.
Okay.
So that it wouldn't be used for tables, chairs, sitting out. It's walking through it.
So my confusion is, staff in their report says when they came out on May 1st, they saw a table and chairs.
Because it was still under construction. It had never finished yet.
Okay.
At that point.
So tell me when this got finished? What is there now?
And it's still not finished. It's a process, and a costly process that I'm going through. I had to, that was thousands of dollars of stone I had to remove.
Okay.
First and foremost. And you can see on the next page, you'll also see me forming planters, zane. And this path, this flagstone path will also make a line to go all the way back to the garage.
Okay.
So there's coming from the front gate. Here's my planters. And so it's going to be more landscaping that we're involved in it. So that area will be like a path, which comes in between.
Okay. So your intention is now that it be like a rock or a zen garden, for all intents and purposes? Your intention is never to put a patio there?
Correct.
Your intention is not to put a grill thing, not a grill?
No, no.
What are they called? Fire pits.
Fire pits.
Right, exactly.
Okay. So the intention also is not?
Here's my path.
Yep.
And I'm still working on it, and you can see that it's all gravel. There's never been concrete in this area. There's no concrete even on the patio on the back.
Okay.
Because it's all set in sand, and the material to give you your base on the bottom.
Yep, the compacted.
Water drain system installed on the back there to take care of the water runoff with my rain barrels. So my patio is behind the garage on the west side of the garage.
And so had the flagstone path through the grass, has that always been there? Or is that new as well?
This is me continuing with the gravel, trying to get it in order. I mean, we only have some dollars, you know what I mean? And that was costly for me to get it where I'm going. And to just say, okay, just take that out and make it like that, it's not going to work.
Okay. Anybody else have questions?
I have a question. So to clarify, then, did your use of this space, your intended use of this space change when you had the bluestone in there? Were you intending to use this side area as a seating area? And then now, your intended use has changed based on what the staff deliberations have been?
Absolutely.
Because you understand that we have pictures that show?
I do.
A fire pit and a patio, and a table and chairs and all that sort of stuff?
I do.
Okay. So at one time, it was that?
No, the fire pit was never going to stay there.
Okay.
So when the patio was being formed, stuff was moved to one side of the yard to the other side.
Okay.
Just transitioning.
Right.
So when they came out to actually take the final picture, surprisingly, there was two chairs upside down, so I don't understand how that still became a patio. But the flagstone had never been placed. My planters had never been spaced. My boulders had never been rearranged. So a lot of things that has been done is still, is in the process of being done.
So tell me a little bit more about what's phase two here? What's next?
I'm continuing with more boulders, and this is going to be a narrower, more path.
Show me in that picture where the boulders are. I can't find them.
So there isn't yet another picture we can?
Oh, yep.
There should be a picture showing the, so that's the, see right here, I'm going boulders here. So on this corner right here, you see two statues, statues up under a tree, which is a blooming pear tree. And then there would be more rock gardens involved in that, and then there'd be some more like green spotted well plants that comes out of that.
Okay.
So it'll get much.
Do you have a plan of, like a drawing of where you're going with this?
I've never landscaped that way.
Could you?
Well, if anyone's driven by or noticed, I mean, I've known Betty for 17 years, and it's always been a process. Her yard is gorgeous and evil.
Right, but you've got to have a vision. If you can do that, you've got a vision.
I do have a vision.
You know where it's going.
But I get help from a lot of people, and people swap my ass with me.
Right.
And they say, well, I think this would look nice in your yard, and I add it in, incorporate. It's just not something I just, you know?
I'm not asking for what every specific plant is.
Right.
Donna, help her out. Show me some green on where it goes.
We could create a drawing over the site plan that would indicate her intent for future boulders, future planting.
Outstanding.
That we can do, yes.
That would be helpful.
Okay.
Yeah.
That would be really helpful, because that changes the intent of what the space is.
Exactly.
Because when this becomes a walkway, gravel is allowed as a walkway.
Okay.
Gravel is allowed as a patio. You can't have a patio in your side yard. That's the short story.
Understood.
That's the short story.
And I thank you for the clarification.
Okay. I'm feeling like I've gotten clarification.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have questions?
I have a question for city staff. I do think that it is an injustice to citizens of Evanston to get conflicting information from city staff. And is, I mean, if you've verified that they were told that after they went to the expense of removing the bluestone patio, and that they would be able to install gravel. You know, I do understand the definition of the patio in the side yard versus the gravel in the side yard, but it seems once again as though there is an arbitrariness to the way in which these definitions are being applied, impervious or not impervious. They thought they were combating an impervious surface issue.
Right.
When they altered it, and all of a sudden, they weren't. They were combating, you know, and of course, it's patio in the side yard. I do understand that too.
Right.
But it just seems as though there ought to be some consistency with which, you know, and that if staff makes an error, that they are able to, you know? I think that Mary Beth is on the right track here in saying, so you need to redefine that area such that it does not appear to be so clearly rectangular as to invite use as a patio. But I see that as just being problematic, just as a point of fact.
Thank you, board member. I do apologize for the miscommunication with staff and the applicant. Did apologize for that previously as well. I can understand how it could be conveyed that gravel is not an impervious surface, and that's not at question tonight. And then also, as was mentioned, there are probably applications of gravel that are not a patio, you know, in place of bulge and kind of landscaping around, used around landscape areas as a pathway, items like that. And I believe our formal communication was pretty clear in the determination letter about removal of the side patio. The informal communication in the interim was not as clear as it could have been and was conflicting. I do apologize for that. Staff did waive the appeal fee for this determination in consideration of that communication there. However, when we finally did go and inspect on that May 1st, when we initially said it should be in compliance per the initial determination, at that point, it was up to the zoning administrator, to myself, to make a determination about whether this was still a patio or not. And in my estimation, it was a patio based on our definition of a patio and having that hardscape material that was there, and was described, kind of the dimensions being the same as the previous patio that was there.
I have a question.
Sorry.
I have a question to staff. Also, if she makes the recommendations, like redraws it and makes it into a narrow area, can it now be considered a path instead of a patio, in your opinion?
I think something we could take a look at, probably have to take a look at dimensions of it. I think it is, you know, it's a sort of enforcement mechanism when improvement's already there and it's kind of how it's being used. How it's being used could change from hour to hour, day to day. So that makes it a little more complicated.
Has it been used as a patio, Ms. Lambert?
No. Not since the bluestones were taken up.
And when were the bluestones actually taken out?
Last year. So right, it was in December.
Really?
When my husband was out there. You know, you had that warm winter thing?
Yeah. So you guys pulled them up then?
Most of them.
Okay. And so when did the gravel go in?
I want to say springtime.
Okay.
In the spring, yes.
Before your plantings really were full like this?
Right.
It'd always been full.
Oh, okay.
I've always had, I mean, hey, we don't have a picture of the front, but always had full garden and landscape.
So that picture we have showing the table and the fire pit, also, like, there's no plantings back there. There's no plantings against the house. You're saying that was back in December?
Could we see that picture?
Yes. That one, yep. That first one.
That was the patio. I can't even tell what that is.
I know. It's hard to see there.
This is the patio behind your garage?
No.
No.
This is the patio that was on the side that was completed.
That was before the bluestones were taken up.
Before the bluestone was taken up.
Okay. So that's back in November?
That's back in November.
Okay.
The photo's not dated?
You know, I have a further.
Taking from his house into.
Yes.
Yeah. Scott, I have a further question. So, I mean, let me first say that when I looked at the photos that were in the packet that we received, I fully understood why, you know, staff would come out and say, come on, this is still a patio. It is a perfectly square, gravelled area intended to be used as a patio. So I probably would have had the same response. I don't want to, you know, castigate anybody for that. But my question to, and maybe this is legal or to staff, is, you know, if somebody, for example, I have side yards in which sometimes I put, you know, a round table and a bunch of chairs if I'm having people over. When does, if it's impervious surface, when does it become defined as a patio?
Do you mean if it's impervious?
And when is it just a garden that is, you know, where, see, people can sometimes put a chair on it, and sometimes they can't. So I'm confused as to what constitutes a patio if it is just occasionally used to put a table out, which I think many of us do.
Which, in the past, I mean, from the very beginning, I've always had a little stool there and a chair, because I washed the dogs over there. That's where my water spigot is. Or that's where my kids always sunbathed. So to me, I mean, that's where my full sun is, and my back is shaded. So it was like, okay, this, why am I not using this area? So it would never have crossed my mind that I was not able to use this area. So we even looked on your website for the rules on patios, and there was no area that said side patios was not allowed. So when we finally got this call, we was at awe. So I called Donna Lee and said, what are they talking about? And she said, well, they don't call for permit. They call for zoning compliance analysis. And that's when it all started bawling. But, I mean, this nasty neighbor was literally, sorry.
Yep. Stay to the topic. Stay to the topic. Thank you.
Caught us so off guard with the situation.
I think Scott's got something he'd like to add here.
Yes.
Board member McCollough, in response to your question, the definition of patio within the zoning ordinance is a portion of the lot which improve the hardscape material at grade. So that portion, the hardscape material there.
So how do you define hardscape?
If we say the gravel is permeable, it's not hardscape? I mean, I'd kind of want a definition clarification on that.
Sure. It would be a lot easier for all of us if the zoning ordinance had a definition of hardscape material.
Exactly. They don't have one for terrace either.
However, it does not have a definition for hardscape material. I did some research, other zoning ordinances, other reference materials. Many of those do reference gravel as being hardscape material or differentiate between softscape materials being something that's organic.
Grass mulch.
Again, something, correct, correct. Versus a hardscape material that's non-organic.
Right.
So in that sense, that's where the definition was for hardscape material, and that's where I made the determination that it constituted a patio. So in response to your question about table and chairs on grass, that would not constitute a patio, based on the zoning ordinance's definition.
So I had asked devil's advocate of him. What about putting a table and chairs on the grass? We all do that, right? The key there is that it's unlikely to be used for a very long amount of time. So that's, you know, you're having a birthday party, you set out a table and chairs, and people go out and they, you know, do whatever. But when it becomes a hardscape surface, and hardscape generally defined on the interweb, crushed gravel is a hardscape surface. But when it becomes a hardscape surface, then it gets used more frequently, which is when it starts to become that definition of a patio versus, hey, there's a table and chairs there for the occasional use. So that's sort of how we get there. I had as much trouble with this as you guys did. Took me about four hours to get through it. So, sorry. Any other questions from anybody up here? Do you guys want to say anything else? Because I see somebody who wants to say something.
Yes.
So do we want to open this up for public comment?
I think so.
When does it become a sidewalk?[1757.14]
When is a sidewalk not a sidewalk?
When, when does it become a sidewalk?
Versus, sorry, first of all, I forgot. Can I have your name and address?
I'm Skip Weber, 743 Asbury. I'm probably right on the edge of the distance you send out mailers on.
500 feet? Okay.
Is it 500 feet or 250?
It's 500.
Okay.
250 for a minor, sorry.
Okay. Okay, and.
We try not to get involved in minors.
When, when does it become a sidewalk?
Versus, when it becomes a path versus a patio?
Yeah.
So, again, that's gonna be up to the zoning administrator, but it's sort of an acceptable range of sidewalks. So for example, your courtesy walk on the front, on, from the, from the street to the, your sidewalk is two and a half feet. The sidewalk in front of your house is five feet. I would say that a sidewalk or a path is anywhere between two and a half to five feet. Those are sort of accepted norms throughout the community. So it's somewhere in that range. It's not 10 by 15.
Or a driveway.
When does it become a driveway? Oh, let's not go down that path.
That's a pun?
Yeah. That one gets more complicated.
Okay, all right.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Would anybody else like to say anything? Come on up, give me your name and address, please.
I probably found the name to say that.
That's okay, you gotta do it again.
No, I will. Pam Johnson, 807 Madison, two blocks away. But a friend of Betty's, so I've been through this with her. I think it became a squ, a square because she spent all this money on the bluestone and then found out, I would have put in a patio and not gotten a permit, not that it's right, but I didn't know. I, it was a surprise to her, surprise, surprise to everyone. But I think it became the bluestone because she'd spent all this, a lot of money to have someone do it, take it out and think, how can I make something out of this mess that I'm in? But she got the idea from a neighbor of mine who has the exact same thing on their side yard. So I hear this and it kind of makes you crazy that they can do it, but now she has to go through all this. And that's all I have to say.
So the short story in Evanston, right, is we don't have enforcement walking around giving everybody citations. It's all up to your neighbors. So that's why we always encourage be as friendly with your neighbors as you can.
And, and I agree.
Keeps you out of trouble.
And, and this isn't a side, has nothing to do with her, all about me, but my neighbor has an outdoor porch that's, then she put plastic on it, so she's out there four times a year, you know, a nice house. Dear Lord, it's under my bedroom window. It's a nightmare. You want to, that patio is not anywhere near what I live with, day in and day out.
We encourage you to call zoning and you can.
I'm not starting, no, no.
I'll see, there you go.
I'm not starting anything.
Somebody's gotta be willing to do it.
But now I know they didn't get a permit for it.
Yep.
But it's too late and it's a night, all the things you guys approve on that house has made my house next to unlivable. So this little thing makes me crazy to hear with what I live with and what was approved here. Okay.
We appreciate your comments. Thank you so much. Is there anybody else?
Uh, well.
Yeah. Would, you wanna, you wanna sum up?
Uh, well, there was a letter submitted. Did Catherine email that or the letter you showed me from Catherine Harold?
Yes.
Do you, have you received that?
There were three emails received since the packet went out and those, the three emails have been printed for.
Okay.
Yes.
I thought she summed it up pretty well. She lives directly next door to the west and is a botanic garden professional and spoke about the gravel area as an alternative to grass that's more ecologically friendly. So I wanted to put in a.
I appreciate that.
A hooray for that, yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
I can read it, I have it.
Come on up. You gotta give us your name and address.
I'm Chelsea Albert.
And then you were, go ahead.
1204 Madison.
And you are reading what?
What they were just talking about, Karen.
But you have to tell me who, who it's from. Did you write it?
Karen Harold. No, no, no. She couldn't be here tonight. Karen Harold, she lives at 1131 Madison. She's right next door to Betty. So to whom it may concern, I live next door to Robert and Betty Lambert at 1131 Madison Street. The Lambert's take great pride in their landscaping and have done a wonderful job to create lush planting that beautify their gar, their yard and are a lovely focal point for all to see. Their conscientious to choose plants that don't require extra watering and have considered removing the grass along both sides of their home as an environmentally friendly way to reduce the water and maintenance that grass requires. As a horticultural educator, the Lambert sought my professional opinion regarding plants that grow well in the gravel area on the east side of the property since they had already removed the grass. The Lambert's are not using that area as a patio or gathering, gathering space. It is a maintenance free side yard that is beautiful, environmentally friendly and respectful. I support their yard to remain as it is. Thank you for taking the time to read this letter. Yeah, and I totally agree. It's like a zen garden. It's not, we're not hanging out. It's like you walk to her backyard where she has a couch and it's gorgeous. It's very relaxing. Yeah, so that's all.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. All right, so if you guys haven't, did you want to sum up? Cause you, cause we're not gonna.
Well, I understand there's no voting happening.
That's correct. We're not gonna close the record. We're gonna leave it open. So we will just continue this to our next meeting where we will allow for more comment.
Yeah, whenever it is. Whenever it is, you'll tell us.
Yes. I think it's the next.
It would be continued to a date certain. The request has been to a, a meeting in August, which would be August 1st.
Right.
Would be the, the first meeting in August.
Can you make that one?
I can.
Fantastic. Okay. All right. I just want to make sure that you guys can make it, because then at that time, after they present their case, we will let you sum up, rebut, do all that sort of stuff. We will then close the record and we will make a determination at that time. So that's the gist of what we're doing.
Would, excuse me, the drawing we mentioned.
Yes.
Having made, bringing it.
Yes.
Having it submitted to you prior.
Yes, please, please. Because Scott will also then forward it to the, the, I don't know what we're called.
We can include in the packet for the next.
Thank you. We're gonna include it in the packet.
Scott, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Once there has been reordering or restructuring of the gravel pathway on the side yard, will